Yep, that's what it is.
Hey, Sherri, if you want to manage your time. Hey, so this morning I'm gonna bring some folks down to Motorola until we get local six radios and they're in town. I'm gonna bring more and have a look to see.
I don't agree.
On those radios, are you gonna be around? I don't know what time it is, but. Yeah, it looks like it's gonna be that.
Johnny, yes, recertification.
Yeah.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Oh, Modaf, there he is. Yeah, no good old Modaf there.
If he loves more than. But I tried to keep it straight. Just don't fall asleep. Hey, JT, morning. I gotta, I'll, I'll remind me to text you the pictures of your, your spring.
Here's some state permitted advocate. Hop and farmers and Modaf. Yeah. Behind you. Yeah, it's. But it moves.
I have to see about getting that gentleman name outside.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
He's got top, he got top minds, got top minds on that problem.
Morning, JT.
It is nine, it's nine o'clock and I'll call the, the meeting of the Caddan County Board of Commissioners to order. And let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Johnson, I believe it's your turn. Item number two is call for public comment. Public comment can be submitted personally by a telephone. At these two phone numbers, six oh five eight eight two six two four eight or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. There's a place on the agenda for public comment to discuss items that are otherwise not on the agenda. And just remind people to silence your cell phone. If you need to take a call, please step outside of the room. So are there any conflict of interest items for any commissioners?
No.
Okay. Number four, action to approve the agenda for today, March seventh.
So move.
So motion by Van Duzen, second by Waterman. Any comments, changes? Hey, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say no, if that motion carries. Number five, action to approve the February twenty eighth minutes.
So long.
Motion by Johnson, second by Schwer. Any additions or corrections? Very none. Hall in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say no. Okay, that motion carries. Next on the agenda. Monthly reports, Jody, extension, step fourth. Yeah, I know. Time of the year goes fast.
All right, I just wanna thank you to all the volunteers who helped with our Watertown Winter Farm Show lunch counters. And we just held another lunch counter with the home builder show that was manned by all of our four H clubs and parents and leaders. They all took a two hour shift during the home builder show. So all these funds help raise money for our education and to our youth. So our Northeast four H Y P Youth Program Advisors, we get together with Dave Marshall, Grant, Roberts, Brookings, and myself. We are having, offering a virtual kid care again this year for six weeks. We'll be starting that on March twenty seventh. It'll go till May first. Registration is now open. And we opened it throughout the whole state. We put it in our Friday message that goes to all the advisors across the state. We have kids already enrolled from Phillip and Piedmont and all over the state signing up on our dot form. So this will be great. So they have to like March nineteenth to sign up. And then we're gonna get packets out to our other advisors. So our next four H teen dash mixer for the region is Saturday, March twenty fifth at the Extension Complex. It's a great central location for all of our counties to come together. This is for teen leaders to come together and learn some leadership skills. This will have a I hate winter theme this year, which is kind of fitting right now. And we'll have some survivor games to go with that. So our shooting sports is going well and we had a Robin Hood last Thursday night in the bullseye by a junior who was eleven to thirteen. So, so that was pretty good that he.
For those that are, I, I know what a robin is. Some people might not know what that is. It's pretty cool.
Yeah, so it's, I don't even have my phone with me to show you a picture, but it's on Cottonton County Facebook.
Is that where you split an arrow?
Where you split an arrow.
Yeah, goes right down. So you kinda wrecked two arrows, but.
But it's, but it is cool. It is pretty cool.
Um, I'll be assisting. I'm a part of the Women in Science Committee next Monday at Lake Area Tech College. We always host that during their spring break. So that'll be for eighth grade youth, learning about science careers. And then our South Dakota Association of Four H Youth Program Advisors are meeting in the last week of March in Aberdeen. And everything I tell my kids and where it's weather permitting, you know, we'll have that. So I have forty eight clover buds and I'm meeting with them in Florence yesterday and today again. And it's great to see all those kids too. So. Any questions?
I mean, with the multi district building trains, people often, it looks like I have plenty of projects to judge.
Yeah, they were, they had that at Home Builder Show where they put together containers. So, yeah, that was nice.
Did you make mom and dad get the grill out? Construct those things. Well, actually, they have to do a little sign this year, I think, some of those, don't they?
I would.
I should explain. One of the summer projects, it's a, it's a building project for the four Hers. And the building trades up a multi district, they do the cutting out of some of the materials, right?
Well, they did for the home builder show, but the ones that I did during the summer were cut by my husband.
Nice, nice.
For the, all the summer, all the kits that I did for like twenty months, I think we.
Anyway, then they send it out to the four H kids, enrollees, you know, and then they construct them and actually they paint them and jazz them up pretty nice. And then they, that's a project that they bring to achievement days. And I get to judge all of them. So that's pretty cool.
Yeah, any questions?
Nope.
All right.
Thanks, Jody.
Thank you.
Odd. But our Veterans Services Officer.
Good morning.
Good morning, morning.
Good morning. So we're gonna have a few metrics here to start off with. Again, we have about twenty one hundred veterans in the Cottonton County. Uh, we currently have a hundred and fifty five open or working claims. Uh, year to date, we've completed fifty seven. We did add all, uh, add in all the headstone and marker requests, which is about twenty five, I think, that we didn't have on the totals from the first time we did the metrics. Um, in the month of February, we added an increase in monthly compensation for veterans and their dependents of about nine thousand five hundred seventy five dollars. Year to date, that would be about twenty eight thousand, just a little over twenty eight thousand dollars. Um, retro payments. In February, we increased by sixty, just, just shy of sixty nine thousand dollars. And again, a retro payment is a payment that brings a claim to current monthly compensation. Year to date, where it's two hundred and ten thousand approximately is what we brought back or brought into the county in retro payments.
From that standpoint. So is that, was that because they, they weren't getting the benefits they should have been getting and they figured it out kind of thing with them?
No, uh, so you file a claim and it might take, you know, six months, it might take a year.
Right.
So when you file that claim, a retro payment starts from the date that you file the claim. And then when the claim is approved, if it's a year later, whatever that compens, monthly compensation was for those last twelve months.
Correct, right.
They bring all that current and then they, from that standpoint. Um, we had two veteran transports in February and we got two scheduled for March. Um, I'm gonna talk quickly a little bit about Honor the Pact Act. I've, I've mentioned this before. Um, again, that was a law passed by Congress on ten August of twenty twenty two. Um, we're starting to see the impact even in our office. Um, this is gonna be a huge deal for the VA and for veterans for years to come. Um, like on Vietnam era veterans for Agent Orange exposure, they added several new locations. Some of these locations do have a time limit with them, but currently, you know, you look at Vietnam Agent Orange exposure is from Vietnam or vessels operating within twelve nautical miles of Vietnam. Okay, that's that one. You also have Thailand that has been added. That affects a lot of Air Force personnel. Uh, Laos, Cambodia, Guam, it affects a lot of the Navy. And one thing unique with Guam, it's, it's not just during that, but it didn't end at seventy five. It actually carries out to nineteen eighty. So again, there are some specifics, but that's the more general areas. And there's currently seventeen presumptive conditions that are dealing with Agent Orange. So if a veteran was to acquire that condition today, hypertension via the new one that just got added, that's very common. You know, even if they were diagnosed ten years ago, fifteen years ago, they can be service connected with that from that today. We can put them with that in that area. Uh, this also affects the Gulf War and post nine eleven for toxic exposure. You know, those locations are Southwest Asia Theater of Operations, Egypt, Turkey, Syria, Jordan, Persian Gulf War, Iraq, Iran, Afghanistan, Djibouti, Uzbekistan. And there are some of those also that have certain timeframes of when they could be there, but.
Was that, I'm sorry, was that burn pit? Was that?
Uh, you call it burn pit, toxic exposure from that standpoint. There's currently twenty seven presumptive conditions for anybody that served in there. And why I just bring this up because it's not, we've already filed two claims for veterans that I had worked with previously that had passed, that had served in the Gulf War. That I just remembered working the claim. I reached out and talked to the spouse. And we're filing claims for them because now what they had passed from and they were in the Gulf War, their spouse is possibly entitled to that. So it's, it's a big thing there and that'll be going on for years to come. Um, we are currently working to review all the old records, the, just like that, for veterans that might have passed from presumptive conditions and looking at benefits for surviving spouses. Along with that, our future thing is to try to figure out, maybe to try to have a veterans town hall or symposium, maybe at the Legion VFW, just to open it up, maybe put it in the paper, get it on the radio to say, hey, if, if, if you're a veteran or you're a veteran served in one of these locations, come in, let's have a little talk about that. And then also we'll be doing a, maybe trying to do, get a few drivers during that same timeframe for the vans. So any questions of me?
Just, uh, just a, maybe putting a bug in your ear if you think it's reasonable as you, as you're starting to develop your metrics and how you report stuff, is it possible like to separate the different reasons for the claims? As you do, like you, like you're seeing a lot more pack.
Um, there, there is. I mean, we have a few codes. I didn't know how deep that you guys would wanna get into that, but.
Not super deep, but you know.
Yeah, we, we do. We have a, a list of different codes, you know, and that's like when we talk about complete, you know, that's ones that are completed, ones that have been denied, ones that have been expired, because sometimes veterans come in and they start a claim and then we do an intent to file, but they never follow through. So we have that. We also have some different ones in there where uh, yeah, we could do that. I mean.
A lot of detail, but it might be interesting over time is since you're, you're kind of getting a handle on all this, it's, it could be, or it's, sometimes it's easier to start when you're beginning.
Yeah, I get it. Yeah, so. Okay, thank you. Have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, next item on the agenda, action to approve the twenty twenty three seven Conkey Edition Plan. Luke Mueller is in the room. Let's see if I can find that.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. I think it's in the package here.
Yeah, I was just.
Yeah.
I had a minor freak out as to whether or not I sent it to you.
Yeah.
Sent it on. Uh, yes, what we have is a pretty simple item, a plot of Conkey Edition in the Northwest Quarter Section Three, one eighteen fifty four. That's in Fuller Township, straight. It's within a half a mile of the city limits of Florence and be about a mile straight north of Highway twenty as you head toward Florence or about a half mile from the sewer lagoons from the city of Florence is where this is at. It is on a gravel county road which is four forty fifth avenue. The Conkeys own forty quarter quarter right now and it's surrounded by family members as well. They have created a farmstead exemption primarily for financing purposes because they're going to build a new house on a five acre legal description, retain ownership of the surrounding piece. But again, bank doesn't wanna have more of that property. They do qualify for a farmstead exemption, which is why the Board of Adjustment granted it to them, thus allowing them the ability to plat this. And the planning commissioner recommended approval of this plat back in February.
Those approve.
Johnson, second by Waterman. Any questions or discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Okay, that motion carries.
All right, I'll just give you a, if, if it's okay, I'll just give you a heads up on, on office hours just so that you're aware I am. Uh, the next planning commission meeting and Board of Adjustment meeting is March twenty seventh. I believe that's a Monday. That is the, the next meeting. It's a week later because I am out basically every Friday leading up to that point with family vacations and stuff going on. So if you hear from people saying it's hard to get a hold of me, they're right. It is this week. It is gonna be for the rest of the month. It's gonna be pretty tough.
It's March twenty seventh.
It is, yep. It'll be, if that's Monday, I think it's Monday, March.
Is that the noon meeting?
It is a nine AM meeting.
Yeah, that works. The annual meeting is that night.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so I just kinda wanted to remind that that's going on and I, yeah. I'm doing my best to get back to people, although it, it may be cases, they really um, messages at the Extension Building left with Becky or Kim, they'll get returned. I'll do my best. Sometimes it may be outside of those nine to eleven hours. I gotta get back to them just because my schedule is crazy this month. So just wanted to give you that heads up that if somebody's saying it's been tricky to catch loop, well, I apologize. That's a trick for, for the next couple of weeks. So Monday, Wednesday, pretty much there, but after that, uh, that's, it's tricky. So just wanted to give you a heads up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thanks.
Item number eight, action to approve, um, an application for the South Dakota Community Foundation bid idea grant for Systems of Care Sustainability. And we have here.
Morning, Sarah.
Good morning. Um, yeah, so this request is for the Big Idea Grant. We did apply for this in the first round. We didn't get it and we had a follow up call with them about why, and they just said there were just a lot of applicants. They really said, um, they liked our application. I think there, we were, from what they said, we were at the top of the people that didn't get it. And so it's well worth our time to reapply. The goal of this grant will be to, um, contract with community, um, CRHI is, um, Center for Rural Health Improvement. Sorry, I always have to think about that. Out of Sioux Falls with their USD, Erin Surtzka is the director there. We would contract with her to, um, basically establish the backbone organization for all of the work that I've been doing with the intent that the work that I've been doing would be taken out of the county and, and located somewhere else within our community. So we would have some, somebody outside of the county facilitating all of the strategic planning work and the social services work that we've been doing. Um, and then that would no longer fall within the county, but really be owned by the community with that. And so that's what that grant is for, is to have, hire a contractor or a contract organization to facilitate that process. That's probably as clear as mud because it's a lot of different stuff, but it's just basically we're looking at how we can sustain the work that has been happening over the last two years and contracting with an organization that can help build a sustaining agency for that.
Just first question, do I have the right thing on the screen? Is that, that's not the?
No, that's not. But no, we, I, no.
This one's not in the packet. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll move to approve the, yeah, well.
Motion.
For the application of the South Dakota Community Foundation, big idea grant.
Yes, we have a motion by Johnson, second by Van Duzen. Any questions or discussion? So I, I do have a question. So, so this would essentially create almost a, like a, like a community, would create like a nonprofit almost?
Well, the idea, I mean, that's what Erin would look at is where this would, where would be a natural place for it to fall in the community. And so it would bring in other community players and see what makes the most sense for it to do it. My hope would not be that it would create a new nonprofit, but that we could fall within a different organization that already exists in our community. I don't wanna like throw ideas out because I have no idea what that will look like. I mean, so this model is called Collective Impact. That's basically the work we've been doing. It's called Collective Impact. And other communities are, have been doing it. Sioux Falls has Thrive, which is their collective impact. And so we've had some conversations with them. Rapid City has a collective impact program. We've had some conversations with them. And so, um, government isn't the right place for this to land ultimately. And that, and so that's what we need to be able to talk to other agencies about.
And so, so the, the anticipated timeframe, so, so if say Erin or somebody was kind of like honchoing the effort, it'd mean it'd be kind of a, like a, she'd be like a project manager, I'm guessing, in this case. So.
Yeah.
Um, what timeframe for the project is anticipating?
So the applications are due March thirty first. The funding will be announced in June and then I believe we would have a year.
A year to get it done. Okay. And then the, the idea is to get, get kind of some kind of a coordinated system. Hitting on all cylinders, okay.
Is that renewable every year?
There is renewable opportunities for that. So if we needed to do that, um, that would, I mean, we could.
Okay. Can you recite the numbers again? Just.
Um, yeah, so this grant is eligible for up to a hundred thousand dollars. I haven't written the grant yet. I don't know what that amount will be. Um, obviously, if we get the grant, we'll have to come back to you for the approval of that amount.
It's, it's a hundred percent or?
Yeah, no match.
No match, okay.
No match.
Any other questions or discussions?
Nope.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say no. Okay, that motion carries. I think you have the next couple here too. Number nine is, uh, Community Health Worker, uh, Grant Application.
Yep, and this is a grant that we received, um, for our Community Health Worker position that we currently have. They did receive the extension on the funding. And so this is just to apply for the second year of funding for the Community Health Worker. This one is due, um, March eighth. That was a really short turnaround time. It opened March first or maybe end of February. It's due March eighth, which is this week. Um, I do have this one ready to go and it's right around ninety thousand dollars for the Community Health Worker and all expenses associated with that. That also cover, covers some of my time for supervising her and developing the program and mileage, other supporting costs as well.
Those approve.
So motion by Johnson.
I'll second it.
By Schwer. Um, and just one question. Um, so you said, you said it's a hundred, a hundred percent, right?
This one is, yes, I wasn't sure it was gonna be a hundred percent again, but it sounds like it is a hundred percent again. One thing I do wanna note is initially when we had this grant, we were looking at, um, more of the people involved with the legal system. After almost a year of having this, we have learned, like figured out some things about it. And so we're switching our designated population a little bit. We're looking at more of high utilizers, um, knowing that those high utilizers can also end up in our legal system as well. But really the people that are coming in and out of our office, um, we have a team established that kind of helps identify them, um, working with, working on getting the hospital as being part of that team too. So high utilizer, utilizers for them too. Also looking at Medicaid reimbursement for them to help cover the cost of this so that, um, hopefully within the next six months, we would be approved to bill Medicaid for the Community Health Worker role. And that would then allow us to have sustainability for that position, that it wouldn't be funded a hundred percent through the county, but Medicaid would help with a large portion of that salary.
Any other questions or discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I will say no. Okay, that motion carries. So now I think you have the next one, number ten, right?
Yep.
Yep. Okay, that's the one that was in the packet. Okay.
Yeah. So this one is, um, as you know, part of our strategic planning was to develop emergency housing here in Watertown. We have, through the South Dakota Housing Development Authority has approved funding for Watertown to develop a new nonprofit called Watertown Cares that it's gonna manage the emergency housing. It's the six one two flats over, um, two twelve and eighty one. And, um, what our board has realized that, um, while we will be mostly funded through South, uh, Watertown, South Dakota Housing Authority, we, one, we need some startup funds because we get reimbursed from those funds. And so we don't have them upfront for the salary. And then also there's gonna be some other operating costs that we're gonna need to fundraise for. So what we're doing right now is requesting equal assistance from the county, the city. Um, a request is put into the Watertown Community Foundation and Prairie Lakes Hospital. We're waiting to hear from those, but we're requesting startup costs of fifteen thousand dollars from each of those to establish the funds to hire somebody who we have, um, somebody that's accepted the position. So funds to be able to pay him. And then also just to get us going and get us started, that amount would be reduced over the next two years for that.
And this.
Oh.
You do have a budget.
Yes, thank you. That's a really important note. So what I'm proposing is that, um, in my budget, I have twenty five thousand dollars budgeted out of, um, the emergency rent assistance. And so what I'm requesting is that we take fifteen thousand dollars out of my budget from that and, and allocate it towards Watertown Cares and, which would still leave me some funds. The whole point of this is that Watertown Cares will be able to meet those needs and that the county shouldn't, that shouldn't have to come back to the county anymore because they'll have the funding and the ability to both financially support and then provide the case management to support those individuals in need.
Those approve.
One, a motion by Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second, I swear. So just so people understand, so this is, the, the motion is to basically allow this expense from your budget. So.
Yeah.
And that is a one time expense.
It's a one time. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Will say no. Okay, that motion carries.
Thank you. All right, thanks. Have a great day.
To. Number eleven, action to approve February ARPA salary transfers.
All right. With that, uh, we still do have some funds left from the ARPA dollars that we received. And we will be putting five hundred thirty six, two hundred and fifteen thousand and ninety three cents into the general fund. Uh, we cannot deduct for, uh, the the health worker in Sarah's office because that is, we receive federal dollars for that. We will also put back into the road and bridge fund ninety nine thousand six hundred twenty eight dollars and forty eight cents. Uh, emergency management is disallowed. Also victims of crime will put eight thousand twenty dollars and sixty three cents back into that fund. So the total amount that we will be putting back into those different, uh, funds is six hundred forty three thousand eight hundred sixty five dollars and four cents. So, um, we are down to having thirty eight thousand four hundred fifty six dollars and thirty six cents left for March payroll, which will easily then, we will have all the ARPA dollars spent and put back into our general fund.
Okay, sir, chair. Brenda, how much was going back into the road and bridge fund? Ninety nine thousand, what was it?
Yep.
Highlight.
Okay, yep.
Ninety nine thousand six twenty eight forty eight.
Thank you.
So those, you know, so the, the reasons that some of, some of those salaries you can't use this money for is because it's covered by other programs, you know, this various other things that have.
Yes, if we receive federal, um, or state dollars for those other. Yeah, those are ones we can.
Sure, motion and a second.
Motor per.
So motion by Van Duzen. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Waterman. So just so people understand what we're doing here. Um, this is, we, so we had the ARPA funding, which was basically COVID funding, the American Recovery. And, um, I forget what the oh, I forget what the P, P stands for, but A, the last A is for ACT. So basically a lot of jurisdictions throughout the country is, is a result of, you know, the economic impact of COVID. Um, got money. Our county got some of that, um, directly from the federal government. The, uh, and so the simplest way to make use of it, basically we're allowed to use that. The uh and so the the simplest way to make use that, basically, we're allowed to use that for general, you know, general fund expenses. So the easiest and least least amount of um. I guess paperwork on the part of our 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 county staff is to do it this way to to use the money for salaries. And then that frees up other fun, other the funds for some funds for other things such as the HVAC project we have going on with our detention center. So anyway, that's just just a quick explanation.
American Rescue Plan.
Thank you, American Rescue Plan. Thank you, American Rescue Planet. Yeah, all right. So any other discussions or question? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mostly no. Yeah, that motion carries. So number twelve, action to approve claims for payment.
Don't have anything for twelve or thirteen.
So then that brings us to number fourteen, personnel changes.
Right, I have three of those. I don't, I believe you should have those in your packet. Uh, the first one is uh for myself is the new county auditor. Um, new step is grade sixty five E step one. The rate of pay is six thousand four hundred and fifty five dollars and forty cents per month newly elected. The second one is for Cindy Brugman for an auditor specialist position. There is no step, it is uh the rate of pay would be forty dollars per hour. And this is occasional part time temporary employee nineteen hours per week or less to provide assistance to the auditor as needed. And no uh benefits are provided for this position. The other, the final one is for Harold Rounds. Uh, I should say his effective date is three fifteen twenty twenty three. His title position is Highway Tech Three, Grade Thirty Five. In the highway department, step one, his current rate of pay is twenty three eighty six. Um, dollars an hour, four thousand one fifty one sixty four a month. And that's a new rate of pay for the new hire.
I'll move to approve.
So motion by Van Duzen.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwerer. Any other uh discussions or questions?
Just like to clarify on the second one with Cindy, um, you know, Cindy was a long time auditor for a lot of years and. Uh, when she retired, she took a lot of knowledge with her. And so as we make this transition. Uh, we've asked her to kind of be a consultant for us and help us through this transition, and that's the reason for the part time.
Yeah, thanks. So thanks for that. Any other questions or discussion? So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mostly no, okay, that motion carries and travel request.
All right, I only have one travel request. It's for the welfare department, Sarah Faust. It's for a collective impact um Action Summit. There is no method of transportation, um same day. Uh, oh, no, actually, the partial date is the twenty sixth, return is the twenty eighth um. Lodging expenses, registration is two hundred and ninety nine dollars. Um, she plans to work. At the office until eleven AM and then um her hours will be flexed. And uh not able to be covered by part time staff. It is a budgeted item.
So it's it's a virtual event, so that's why, okay, yeah, all right.
Move to prove.
So motion by Johnson.
I'll second it.
Second by Schwerer. So basically, just the this kind of a different one. So it's mostly just the conference fee since it's a virtual event, so just. Interestingly. Yeah, no.
She's gonna be attending from her house. Is that right?
The office.
From the office.
It's from the.
I would like to attend from my house so I can focus on the information without interruptions for destination.
And then it could be for.
So, yeah.
Oh, yeah, okay. So she did say I'll plan to work at the office until eleven AM. So then. From eleven AM till three thirty. Is when this virtual.
I guess we can. Then we travel request or just another. For example, so. Any other questions or discussion on this?
I I don't think I need to change my motion, so.
Okay.
That's fine. I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I know, just so we know what it is. It's just a kind of a.
It is kind of a different.
Yeah. All right.
Request.
Anything else? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mostly no, okay, so that motion carries. So I don't know if we necessarily had to use a travel request. I mean, we could use that just another, just a budgeted item, I suppose.
Since it's a conference.
Yeah. Okay. Number sixteen, public notices. Any place, we got a couple places where we might have a quorum of commissioners. Um, one was last night, so that one's done. We did have a quorum of the uh. Weed Board in Town and Township's annual meeting. Um. And thanks Steve Mulligraff for for organizing that. Um, and and Commissioner Waterman, you were involved in organizing that meeting. Um, very informative. Then the next uh Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting, um, that's next week. Fifteen, that's Wednesday next week, I believe. And that's in Bryant, South Dakota. Anything, anything else coming up? You think you're a calendar keeper, it looks like, Mr. Johnson.
No, I don't have anything.
I don't think I have, yeah, can't think of it.
Do you have a development company board of directors meeting tomorrow that I'll be attending?
Okay.
Represent the.
Yeah, actually, yeah, actually, a lot of us probably got that invitation then. Um, there is a uh the welfare directors and agency meeting, that's by Zoom. So sometimes a lot of a few of us tune in for that. Um, actually, me and another guy are gonna be talking about the the Ukrainian refugee effort in town on that one. Um.
It's two PM on Thursday.
Yeah, that's two PM on Thursday. That's a Zoom meeting, so. Um. Anything else? Okay, um, is there any old business, number seventeen? Okay, new business? Anything pretty open? I'm just, I didn't hear anything. No public comments? Commissioner comments? Okay, so. Then I don't think we need an executive session. We don't, do we? Okay. All right, so I would.
Move to agree.
Yeah. So second by Johnson, second by Van Duzen, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Mostly no. Okay, we are adjourned. Can you turn, can you stop that that Zoom meeting there?